Welcome to the Baltimore City Council. My name is Jim Kraft. I represent the 1st District. I am the Chairman of the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. And we are here this evening to hear Council Resolution 150263R. I'm joined this evening by my council colleagues. To my immediate left, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, the Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you.
To her left is Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District, a member of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his left is Councilman Warren Branch from the 13th District, a member of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his left is Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his left is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Talking to Councilman Henry is Ms. Kara Kuntz, who is the Legislative Director for the President of the Baltimore City Council, Bernard Jack Young. We're also joined by Ms. Angela Gibson, representing the Mayor of the City of Baltimore, Stephanie Rawlings Blake. This is a resolution that was introduced on September 21st, 2015, entitled "Improving Broadband Internet Access in Baltimore for the Purpose of Supporting Efforts to Improve Access to Broadband Internet Service in Baltimore," and calling for the development of city policies to advance these efforts as well as a comprehensive broadband development and implementation plan in Baltimore City. So, folks, a couple of things. One, this hearing is being broadcast on TV 25. So if you have a phone or some other electronic device with you, please turn it off or put it on something that doesn't beep or buzz or ring so that it doesn't interfere with the broadcast. And if you have to take a message or you have to speak with someone, just step outside the chambers and do that in consideration of whoever may be testifying at the time. We're going to have a number of speakers. We have a panel that we're going to hear from shortly. We're asking the speakers to limit their presentation time to two minutes. We have some testimony that's been submitted, and we have some agency reports. But before we do any of that, I'm going to turn this over to the sponsor of the resolution, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, for opening remarks that she has.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, I wrote my remarks so I'd stay within my two minutes. Thank you for this opportunity to review the status of Baltimore City's progress in implementing the affordable, accessible, high-speed broadband internet services we deserve. The time is now for 21st century opportunities for Baltimore's public institutions and private institutions, residential subscribers, especially in neighborhoods now priced out, and the business community, large and small, including those new businesses we will empower and attract by our decisive action. Specifically, these are my questions. What progress has the city made since its Smarter City Task Force report of August 2015? What options do we have in light of existing contracts to encourage competition among providers for first-rate connectivity and service? And I have an answer to that one, actually. What are the plans for public Wi-Fi access across the city? How will Baltimore partner our resources with nonprofit community and business partners and expertise to create the authority and oversight required to accomplish this leap forward? This is an organizational monster to put together, but we have to do it, and I know we can. Finally, tonight is the occasion when the City Law Department and its council, who we'll be hearing from, officially put to rest the rumor that the Comcast contract is in any way an impediment to competition and alternate options. That's just not so. We can do what we want. We can have as many providers as we can fit on a narrow band. But this came from the Law Department, who references Casey Leedy, who is here and will testify and is working on our renewal negotiations, and will confirm, as she says, this unequivocable My thanks to the Smarter City Task Force for its work today, a lot of work. To the panel testifying this evening, to the Baltimore Broadband Coalition for its own pioneering work, and we'll hear from Dr. Spivak about that, and so many constituents who have worked and waited for this infrastructure upgrade to unequivocally leapfrog communications to every corner of our city as fast as we possibly can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ladies and gentlemen, this bill was referred to a number of departments here in the city. We have a report back from Mr. Johnson, the Director of the Department of Transportation, dated February 22nd of 2016, indicating that the department supports the approval of this resolution without, in concept, without committing to a specific site plan or methodology. Anybody have anything to add to transportation? He's not here. Ms. Gibson?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a report from the Director of the Department of Planning dated October 6th, 2015. Department of Planning recommends approval of the resolution. They support it in concept without committing to specific site plan or methodology. Ms. Feinberg, you have anything to add to that? They're not the one you have to go to because we're...
Oh, they're not?
No.
Oh, because I...
What? Let me... You're good? Okay. All right. The... All right. We have a letter here dated February 11th, 2016, from Dr. Thornton stating that City Schools applauds any efforts to improve broadband in Baltimore City. And basically says that they're supportive of the efforts and look forward to participating in the process.
And basically, Mr. Chairman, if I might just jump in here, Ken Thompson is here as part of the panel, and he is the Chief of Information Technology for the Baltimore City Public Schools, and he does a great job.
Then you'll...
And so he'll speak for that.
Right. Okay. You'll add to that at the time. Okay. All right. We have a letter from the Office of Budget and Management Research dated February 18th, 2016, saying that the Department of Finance takes no position and advises that broadband expansion should be well-planned, including a solid financial plan. So, anything to add for finance?
No.
Okay. Do we need... Hang around? If you wanted to.
If it were Mr. Klein, I'd ask him to hang around to watch him suffer, but it's a young person who probably needs to...
You may be excused.
Yes.
Okay.
Tell Mr. Klein I said, if it had been him, I would have needed him to stay to the bitter end.
Okay. We have a report from the Department of Public Works from Mr. Chow dated February 24th, 2016, stating that the department supports the resolution. Ms. Collins, you have anything to add? Okay.
Can she go too? I think you can go too. Ms. Collins can go too.
As long as... Oh, well, you don't have the conduits anymore.
Right. Ms. Collins, you're excused if you want to leave. Okay. All right. Okay. And then we have the Mayor's Office of Information Technology, and they are supportive of these efforts, and they are actually working with everybody and...
Mr. Murray.
I know. I know. And I'm sure that you'll have something to say at some point.
Mr. Murray.
Okay. All right. Then we'll get to you when we get to the panel. All right. Okay. So, because we're on television, I'd rather have folks speak from the podium rather than speaking from the desks, because I think it's easier for people who are watching to be able to hear everything and see everything. So, Ms. Murray's going to put up the time thing for us.
Oh, jeez.
Huh?
Okay. Well...
Oh, you... Oh, you... Okay. I don't know what happened to it. Okay. All right. I hate to have to do the time myself. That's why...
Yeah. I mean, maybe you could set it up or something.
So, Councilwoman, that's it. It takes five or 10 minutes to set it up, so we're not going to set it up now.
That's a lot of speakers.
Okay. Well, that's why we're not going to...
They'll hold themselves.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, sit down. Don't forget about it. That's okay. All right. So we have a letter from Comcast, and we will put this in the bill file and we'll make sure that everyone, all the committee members... In fact, we'll make sure all the council members get a letter, a copy of the Comcast letter, and send that out to everybody. And we have a... We have a... I don't want those. I don't want to read all that stuff.
I'm with you.
So I've already put it in the file. I just said it's in the file. Okay. The other thing we have is we have testimony from Verizon. And again, we have a long-written testimony from Verizon, which has been given to the members of the committee, and we will make sure that every member of the council gets a copy of Verizon testimony. So if later on Verizon gets up here, because I'm not sure if they're on the sign-in sheet somewhere, please don't read your testimony to us. We can all read. So if you've got something to add to it, please feel free to add to it, but do not get up and read to us what you just read to us, I mean, what you just gave us, okay?
May I just say one thing? Let me just say that actually I contacted Comcast and Verizon when I realized that we hadn't invited them. And so last week I did, and I... And said, you know, "Send a letter if you don't want to come, but I want you to be aware that this is happening, and somebody might mention your name." But... So the letters are the, you know, the response.
Okay.
Which I appreciate.
All right. So, Mr. Hardbeck, okay? You're going to... Come on up. So how are you going to handle your panel? Do you have a... Let me...
Okay.
Are you... You want me to just call each person individually, or are you managing the panel yourself?
No. I think calling individually would be the best.
Okay. Fine. All right. Then it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee... My name is Jason Hardbeck, and I've had the privilege of serving as Baltimore's broadband coordinator since last August. This is a position that was created as a result of a recommendation from the Smarter City Task Force that you referenced earlier. It was stood up about a year and a half ago. One of the primary tasks of this position is to help create a strategy that can encourage competition and increase choice among broadband providers, as well as addressing key issues that impact digital equity among our city residents. I've spent most of my first six months gaining a better understanding of what our city can do to support such a strategy, including physical assets, policies and regulations, and the opportunities and challenges that come with utilizing the tools at our disposal. One of the most significant assets the city has today is approximately 50-mile-long fiber network that contains a large amount of dark fiber that could be made available for use by broadband providers or perhaps even support the development of a purpose-built municipal network. However, this current network is similar to the 695 Beltway with only a couple of exits and no connecting streets. So there's not a lot of use in this existing network until we start to build those streets that connect to the places that want broadband. And in order to make this network viable, significant investments in additional fiber construction will be required. Ways to enable this include having smarter policies, such as a DIG-ONCE policy, where we're able to piggyback on existing efforts when the street's open, putting extra fiber in, et cetera, as well as pursuing strategic collaboration with partners, which could include Baltimore City Public Schools, the State of Maryland, adjacent counties, major development projects underway in the city, and other institutional stakeholders. I often use the fable of stone soup, if you're familiar with this notion that everyone brings a vegetable and throws it in the pot, and at the end you have a delicious soup. But it really describes how you build a network as well, where no one individually has everything needed to make this work, but if we combine efforts, everyone benefits. The network would be based on an open-access model, which is essentially a middle-mile network that would be open to any provider, existing or new, and support them equally, on equal footing. We are currently benchmarking similar efforts in other cities. This is not a new idea by any stretch. As we know, there are many cities doing similar things, but they all depend on existing, you know, unique characteristics or assets of the city. And we're really focused on governance models around there and trying to determine which will help inform what will work best for Baltimore.
Okay.
I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Questions for Mr. Hardbeck?
I have.
Sure.
I have two. I'll put in one question. You're talking about that we already have fiber around the city.
Mm-hmm.
Your analogy being like a Beltway or ring roads that just have some exits but not enough to function properly, and so what we need to do is connect what we do have with neighborhoods and centers...
Correct.
And schools and whatever. Is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you mentioned a term that I never saw before, middle mile.
Right.
What does that mean?
Well, thank you, and I apologize. So, middle mile is really the fiber that connects what we think of as the internet, the major pipes that, you know, are really international in scope and state in scope with... You've heard last mile as an example of, that's really what's connecting individual addresses. So think of it in that analogy of streets. These are the driveways and the side streets that would get to an individual house or business. Middle mile is a way of getting closer to those neighborhoods, essentially, so you can think of it as...
From the central hub of...
From a ring, right.
Of fiber.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. So we have the start of what could be a very robust and useful and practical network, but it's not enough. And there's a significant amount of investment that will be required in order to extend that network into the networks, into the neighborhood, excuse me.
I... Can I...
Okay. All right.
I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Sure.
When can we have this?
Excuse me?
When can we... When can we get some... So, we presume that we can get vendors who will bid to connect to what we already have, a partnership?
Mm-hmm.
And they'll pay a fee, and they'll connect maybe from the middle mile to actual locations?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe from... Well, let's say they do that. When do I get it at my house?
It comes down to money. All right. So is it an investment that the city makes in order to extend that network? Is it an investment that a private entity is willing to do on behalf of, in supporting a model that, for example, Westminster is an example where the city has made a significant public investment to expand their fiber network and has entered in a partnership with an outside provider that will bring fiber or activate, you know, bring fiber to the house. And so they're building a gig fiber network. It's, you know, it could be hundreds of millions of dollars if the city was to do it on their own. That's why we're looking at creative ways of partnering and perhaps building out for multiple purposes in conjunction with other efforts.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you. Good evening. So this isn't technically you, per se, but I'm going to ask you whether you're the person who can explain something to me, or maybe if somebody else on the panel would be better for doing this. Comcast sent this letter because they weren't able to be here, and in the letter they said, and I'm going to quote, "We have announced plans to deploy DOCSIS 3.1 across the country, which will include Baltimore City. This technology will enable us to deliver gigabit and faster speeds on our existing network to residential customers. That's important because unlike some gigabit products in the marketplace, which require digging up streets or stringing new wires to deploy fiber, DOCSIS 3.1 lets us use the lines that are already in all of our customers' homes." Can you very, very quickly explain what DOCSIS 3.1 is and whether it is actually something which would be as, would be comparable to having a fiber network? From the perspective of a residential user?
Right. So it is a product that has the potential to provide that kind of speed to a residential user. I'm not qualified to speak to the technical aspects, but I will say that bring it on and bring additional vendors and additional technologies. I mean, we... Choice is really what we need, right? I mean, and so, yes, I am all for bringing any and all solutions to Baltimore.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Corella, Joseph Corella.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Joseph Corella. I'm a consultant to the Mayor's Office of Information Technology, or MOET, working under Agency Director Jerome Mullins' leadership. I've been consulting on broadband, fiber, and digital adoption programs for almost six years, and on technology and applications for over a dozen. In November 2015, MOET completed the Fiber Overbuild Project, which installed 32 miles of new dark fiber in a ring around the city along the existing public safety ring. This project was completed on time and on budget. In conjunction with the previously completed and federally funded inter-county broadband network, or ICBN, the fiber running through downtown Baltimore and connecting Anarundale County on one side and Baltimore County on the other, the city now has 50 miles of 216 strand of dark fiber, most of which can be used to support economic development, connections to government and other buildings, and connections to other businesses. In mid-2014, I was asked to assist on two broadband-related planning efforts. First, I supported Mayor Rawlings Blake's Smarter City Task Force, or STSCTF, under the guidance of broadband coordinator Hardbeck and Deputy Mayor Colin Tarbert. I also supported the development of the Magellan Broadband Report. Both of those reports were formally issued in August 2015, coincident with the naming of Mr. Hardbeck as the city's broadband coordinator. This past Monday, February 29th, in her State of the City address, Mayor Rawlings Blake mentioned the importance of broadband to support the city's economic growth and for use at schools and public housing. Since the issuance of the Smarter City Task Force report, many in the mayor's office and MOET have worked with many parties internally and externally on several initiatives to position Baltimore to develop policy and programs to encourage broadband use, improve adoption, and leverage physical assets. Among these initiatives, discussion of the broadband authority to define governance models, oversight, and coordinate operations, dark fiber leasing and ICBN programs, working with several local developers, where assessing how the city might leverage existing fiber to accelerate commercial and residential development and create either new revenue streams to the city or in-kind swaps of asset use. Cooperation with federal and state agencies. On February 8th, along with the White House's National Economic Council and the Department of Commerce's National Telecommunications and Information Administration, or NTIA, Baltimore co-hosted a successful broadband roundtable to discuss how to leverage fiber for education, community anchors, and business development, along with creating best-practice adoption and literacy programs at the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and the Enoch Pratt Free Library. City MOET is also in discussion with the State's Department of Information Technology over possible in-kind exchanges of service for mutual benefit between the city and the state. Housing and Urban Development's Connect Home Program. Baltimore is one of 28 Connect Home Pilot Cities, which HUD selected, assessing how to bring broadband access and internet adoption to public housing sites. Working with HABC, MOET is collecting estimates of installing fiber connections and wireless broadband for residents of two HABC public sites. MOET is working with HABC also to define adoption programs to bring training, skills development, and education to those sites. And finally, DIG-ONCE policies. Federal Department of Transportation estimates that 90% of the costs of placing new conduit and fiber are tied to road openings and repair. City agencies are working to coordinate activities to exploit the opportunity to place conduit and fiber whenever the road planning opportunities present themselves, saving taxpayers significant funds and reducing civilian inconvenience. We have prepared a one-page summary of many program activities since the issuance of the Smarter City Task Force, many more than I named here. We'd be pleased to share them with the committee if I might submit, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Corella? Councilman Henry.
No, go.
Good evening. So, like, 11 or 12 years ago, I was an IT guy, which means nowadays I was... I might as well never have been an IT guy. I didn't catch one of your acronyms at the beginning of your remarks. It sounded like you said ICBM?
ICBN, Inter-County Broadband Network.
Okay.
It was part of the ARISTIMULUS grant that was awarded to One Maryland, State Department of IT.
I was... My head was in the ICBM, and that was a very... It went to a bad place.
It's colloquially known as the Intercontinental Ballistic Network. Any questions?
We already have that.
Any further questions?
We're trying to get a... We're trying to regroup.
Okay.
What's your estimate of when we'll begin to see? I think time is of the essence. I read the report of the task force. I thought it was very thoughtful, well-laid out, a good guide. What's... When do we... When do we implement?
I think one of the reasons we're here today is in support of developing that plan. We are actively having conversations over what the right governance models might be. We are actively discussing in-kind swaps with local developers to minimize expenditures. But as Jason suggested earlier, it's a significant capital investment. I believe there's even a inclusion of up to $1 million in one of the bond issuances planned with expenditures in fiscal '17 and '18.
Okay.
But frankly, $1 million doesn't go very far, if I might.
Councilwoman Middleton.
I just want to add, we're a city of trying to create incentives, and within the 6th District, of course, and I'm sure all of us have areas that are, that we have development and growth and revitalization in particular. I referenced my wonderful Park Heights area that's going through a big revitalization. And, you know, they're doing a lot of demolition, and have you considered, or will you kind of consider in that plan to developers that are interested in areas like this, and if there's some type of incentive with this broadband, to include in redeveloping a block and things like that? Has that been part of your...
I think creating those incentives is part of the meta-plan, if you will, specifically to Park Heights, for example. We just included in the Planning Department's RQ that's going out some comments asking for infrastructure to ensure that broadband is included in that whole Park Heights area. And that, I think, was intended to be issued yesterday. I don't know what the purchases group is up to, but we did include requirements to bring broadband and wireless access to Park Heights.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corella.
Thank you.
Ken Thompson.
What happened to... Oh, you're good. Can you bring the...
I got that. I didn't get that.
I know. I just did it. Well, can you bring the...
This is a new one? Okay. Hold on. Wait a minute.
I just made that one.
Hold on. I got a substitute list. Okay. Ken, if you could sit down for a minute, and Casey?
Leedy.
Leedy?
You're actually bad at cleanup.
Yes.
That's a good...
Hold on, I got a substitute list. Okay. Ken, if you could sit down for a minute, and Casey?
Leedy.
Leedy?
You're actually bad at cleanup.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
Good evening.
Okay. And folks, we're going to try to stay to the time things here so we can get everybody in and we can get questions and answers to everybody, okay? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Casey Lied, and I'm an attorney with Baller Herbst Stokes &amp; Lied, a Washington, DC-based law firm with a national full-service communications law practice, although I happen to be a Baltimore City resident, so I'm vested in this discussion as well. Over the last 20 years or so, our firm has been involved in some of the most best-known community broadband projects and some of the first community broadband projects in the United States. These include initiatives in Lafayette, Louisiana, Westminster, Maryland, Urbana-Champaign, Illinois, and in other places. A number of years ago, we were asked by Google to help assist in the creation of their initial RFI, which then ended up having mayors jump in lakes and cities renamed and such, and I believe Baltimore Senate responds in for that as well. We've had the pleasure of serving as outside counsel for the city on telecommunications matters for the past few years, and perhaps most notably, and as I will discuss further in a moment, we currently are assisting the city in negotiations concerning the renewal of the Comcast cable TV service franchise. Before I turn to that, though, a few words about broadband. In simple terms, it seems to me, the question before the city right now seems to be, how can the city best transition from an environment of broadband scarcity to one of broadband abundance? And so, what do I mean by broadband scarcity? Well, in the absence of meaningful competition, commercial, for-profit service providers are less inclined, or, excuse me, will be inclined to ration the available broadband in order to maximize the return of their capital investment. So, what, in other words, if you have one or two providers in a market, there's not much pressure on them to invest and to make service better, to have better service, faster speeds, lower prices, all of the good things that come with competition. And, and so, that's what happens when you have a scarce resource. Now, I'd also note, as an aside, that an increase in broadband speed from the dominant provider, as welcome as it may be, doesn't really fundamentally change that equation. And as, as was noted or asked earlier about Comcast and DOCSIS 3.1, to the best of my knowledge, the prices they are asking for that gigabit service in the markets where it actually, in reality, is offered are on the order of $1,000 per activation fee and $300 a month.
Right.
So, how does, how might the city encourage the development of, I'll be brief as I can, of broadband abundance? So, there's, I view this as a range of options that the city could consider here. And on one end of the spectrum, the city could, in theory, seek to deploy facilities and operate a network as something like Verizon Fios and act as a broadband utility. That's been done in other places, Lafayette, Chattanooga, with some success, but that's not easy and it's not cheap. And in most of those other places where the city is acting as the operator, they also happen to operate a municipal electric utility. Baltimore doesn't have that. So, coming down the spectrum a little bit further, somewhere in the middle is a model sort of pioneered by Westminster, Maryland, which was mentioned previously. In that situation, the city financed and owns the physical fiber-to-the-home infrastructure, but then entered into a contract with a private sector provider to operate the network and then offered on an open-access basis, and open-access meaning multiple retail service providers can then offer services over that network. So, going, stepping further down the spectrum, you have a place like Bozeman, Montana, where city leaders supported the creation of and worked closely with an independent, nonprofit community benefit corporation. And that entity obtained financing for the construction of the network, and then they contracted with a private sector operator to operate it. So, in fact, there are a whole range of possible public-private partnership approaches on, on this subject, and a lot of lessons the city can draw from, but keep in mind, what worked in one place may not work in another. Things change a lot locally in this, in this realm.
Okay.
Finally, and, excuse me.
Go ahead, wrapping up.
Okay. May I, may I turn to Comcast? I know that that was a pressing issue.
I think it's important for people to know.
First, it's important to, I have two points on Comcast. First, it's not an exclusive franchise. Under federal law, cable, exclusive cable service franchises are prohibited. Anybody can come in and get a, if they're, you know, qualified and such, they can get a franchise to provide cable service in competition in the city of Baltimore. Now, the second point is that the cable service franchise generally does not concern broadband. Broadband and cable TV service are very different from a regulatory standpoint, and the FCC has made clear that, under the Federal Cable Act, a cable operator need not agree to any provision in a proposed cable service franchise that would directly address broadband Internet service. So, to, to be clear.
They can't do it.
Pardon me?
Okay.
So, broadband and cable TV are separate services operating under separate regulatory regimes, even though they may use the same wire in the same public right-of-way. So, there are some ways to, to potentially have some effect on broadband and customer service and whatnot in the, in the current cable franchise, but that nibbles around the edges of what is the fundamental issue here, it seems to me. So, thank you for your opportunity to be here. I'd be happy to have any questions.
No problem. Questions?
No, I'm.
Councilman Clark? No? Okay. Councilman Henry?
Thank you. Good evening. Okay. So, just to clarify that, that last part, and I'm, and I'm going to keep an eye on Mr. DiVella from our Law Department while I'm, while I'm saying this, but we're, similarly, we're not required to grant Comcast, are we required to grant Comcast a franchise?
No.
I mean, we're not, we're not required to.
No, you're not required to.
So, if, so if we make one of the conditions of our franchise that they do certain things regarding broadband?
At a certain point, you're going to run afoul of the Federal Cable Act and the Federal Telecommunications Act and FCC pronouncements.
Because they, and that's, I guess that's kind of what I'm asking is, so, we don't have to grant them the franchise, but we can't make something that's broadband-related a condition of the franchise?
Correct.
Huh. Okay. And then, the last question I have on that is, if we don't grant them a franchise, what happens to the physical network?
Well, I can't say that I've had that happen. I'm not aware of that happening anywhere, frankly. I think, I mean, in most franchises, you have terms that govern when the facility can be withdrawn and taken out and what happens to it sometime, in the case of abandonment and things like that. But I think you would be looking at a, a long and possibly rather litigious process.
Okay. I guess I'll let that go in the interest of time.
And I'll just ask a quick question, if I may. What is the process? So, for example, given all that, and now we're looking for broadband, and we're looking for competition and speed and affordability, what process does a vendor, an applicant, have to go through to get to us, to reach us with their fiber and their, and their speed?
Well, I would yield to the City Law Department on this, but if, if they're not providing cable service, then they do not need a cable franchise under the Federal Cable Act. Under local provisions, I understand they would need a franchise of some sort to be in the public right-of-way, but it would not be the same sort of franchise that Comcast has currently.
And not that complicated, complex, lengthy, forever?
Ideally.
That's important.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir. Ken Thompson.
Good evening, Council. How are you today?
Good.
My name is Kenneth Thompson. I have the honor of serving as the Chief Information Officer for the Baltimore City Public Schools. As you read earlier from the memo from the CEO, Dr. Gregory Thornton, we applaud any efforts in the city of Baltimore to extend the fiber connectivity in our neighborhoods because that would indeed add to or expand his goal of extending the instructional day, instructional opportunities for our students. The Baltimore City Public School is very excited and very fortunate, though, that we are in a good place. We are in a good place with broadband to our school. In 81% of our schools, I can stand here today and say we have gig connectivity. In the remaining 18%, we have 100 Mac, which is very intentional. We monitor daily and based upon the uses, that's how we expand it out. The, the district have been intentionally, over the last three years, ensuring that the connectivity, the uptime, the usage rate within our schools at a level that supported not only our business operation, but the instructional opportunities for our students and the instructional programs to ensure that they have the connectivity needed. Now, as I stand here today, as part of our FY17 initiatives, we will be targeting to roll out a one-to-one, which will indeed have to, we would have a need to increase the bandwidth. But based on that, based on our current configuration, we can easily toggle up and down or increase the bandwidth based upon usage. I want to say that the, the district's presence placed today, it has allowed us to utilize all of our business, all of our instructional applications in a place in two data centers, which today, combined, we have over 10 gig capacity out to the Internet. So, with that, I say thank you.
Question? Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thompson, you mentioned the 82 and 18% figure. I couldn't hear you. What does that refer to? The number of schools?
81, 81% of our schools or 152 have gig connectivity, one gig connectivity out to the Internet.
Is there any data on whether or not those schools are, have wireless capability?
And that's our gap. If there was an investment to be made in Baltimore City, we have the highway to the building now, and we do have data to answer your question. As to the wireless capacity or capabilities within those schools, that's our next target. So, that's the one that we're working on now. And yes, we do have data on the percentage of schools that have actual, not the hardwire, but the actual wireless ability, which allows us to differentiate in learning, the mobility in the classroom, those type of things. But yes, we have data that we can provide as to percentage of our schools that have building-wide coverage. I can say that all of our schools have a wireless presence, but the goal is to make it building-wide coverage.
Can you provide a list of that to the council of, a list of all 185 some odd schools and whether or not they have full wireless?
Absolutely.
And also, are there plans in the, in the budget for this year to expand that wireless capacity?
Not this year. It will be, we're targeting next year. We're submitting documentations to expand the footprint of wireless in the district during the FY17 budget, within the next, starting in the next three, four months.
Thank you.
Okay. And if you can just get that to Ms. Murray, she'll follow up with you.
Excellent.
Okay. I have a question for you. Under the present contractor franchise with Comcast, they are required to provide free cable to all of our schools. So, they make the cable connections to the schools. I would like to see them provide free cable to every single classroom in the schools. I think that just bringing it to the building and making it available in the building, you end up, and I know that we've been able to get them in some buildings, they'll, they'll put it in a couple of classrooms, they may put it in the library, you know, but I hope whoever's negotiating our franchise agreement right now would look at that because all those rooms are set up that we could put in cable and the amount of knowledge that comes in through cable today, it really, and the other uses that you can make of it, there's no reason why they should not be providing that to them, you know? It's only wiring at that point, when they're in there. Councilman Henry.
I would just echo those sentiments, except if it hadn't been for what we just heard in testimony, I would have said, except what we really need in each classroom is an Internet connection. And so, I'm, that, that was frankly what I was, what I was hoping to be asking for in the contract. And I still, I have shared this with the, with the Mayor's Office, with, I think, I can't remember if it's Mr. Smolian or Mr. Blundy, but I really do, as the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee, which I expect will be the one that will get the franchise.
We had it last, it was in this committee 12 years ago, the franchise was in, was in this committee, as was the Dominion proposed franchise was in this committee at that time. And we had much more conversation, you know? I don't know whether there is a council member sitting in on the discussions right now and the drafting of the franchise, but.
That is exactly the conversation I had with the Mayor's Office, in that since my committee has been doing the other franchises, even for the distributed area networks, that I had offered to be involved during the negotiation period in the hopes of shortening the time that would be needed to bring the council up to speed once the franchise is concluded. And I have not heard anything further since then.
I mean, we're the ones that have to approve the franchise, and you guys make a deal and we don't like it, then, you know, you got to go back to square one. It would be smart if you had us as part of the discussion, and, you know, if it's going to end up in Councilman Henry's committee, it would be even smarter to have the Chairman of the committee be part of those discussions. So, you know, take that back with you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Well, it gives me great pleasure to see, to see him leaving his former seat, but our distinguished colleague, the former Councilman from the 11th District, Bill Cole, now President and CEO of the Baltimore Development Corporation. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. It is nice to be back as a recovering member of this body. Mr. Green can get slow on hitting the start button while I just.
And he knows he's not going to pay attention to who.
First of all, I do want to acknowledge and, and send regrets from Council, from Councilman, from Deputy Mayor Colin Tarbert. He was feeling progressively worse as the day went on. I think he was trying to reach out to you, Councilman Clark, and I don't think any of us wanted the stuff that's going around, so he decided to avoid a crowded chamber today. But he has been on top of these issues. He was co-chair of the Smarter Cities Task Force with Mr. Hardbeck and has helped guide some resources to us recently. As Mr. Corella mentioned, we have had a number of meetings in the last couple of weeks with the help of the White House and their resources in convening several different federal agencies as we study best practices and the various models that exist. Just this week, we met again at my office, just looking through the various options that exist, and it is complicated. And I think, if anything that Mr. Hardbeck said is worth repeating, the options are in the millions. It's not, and it can be hundreds of millions in order to deploy a network, because having the fiber, and Mark Wagner's here somewhere, and nobody has had more experience in Baltimore on the fiber side, having the fiber is one thing. Having somebody connect it and be the provider is something entirely different. I know Mr. Spivak knows this very well. One of the things I did want to touch upon since Verizon has been mentioned, you all remember, this body remembers, I introduced the resolution.
Oh, yeah.
To the council, chaired the hearing, two hearings, on where is Fios? The reality is, they're not coming to Baltimore, and it wasn't our fault. It wasn't the city's fault. It wasn't the city's council, council fault. I read, and this is why I shouldn't pay attention to social media, but I read somebody post the other day that Verizon had submitted the franchise agreement and the city refused to act on it. That's simply untrue. To defend this body, I will tell you all that it never happened, and the city council didn't stand in the way of Fios coming to the city of Baltimore. What stood in the way was a company that decided to skip Baltimore for, for lots of different reasons, most of them purely financial. And they stopped deploying Fios as a product. We were left out. And unfortunately, we're now left with a dilemma of having no competition on the residential broadband side of things, and that's really what we're talking about. And I'll also say that I've encountered a lot of problems at BDC. In the, on the business side, we have areas of the city that still to this day do not have adequate fiber, fiber coverage, and some of the conversations we're having now are, how do we connect fiber to the port? Many of our port properties rely on wireless line-of-sight technology. If a big ship's in, some of those offices aren't getting connected. I mean, as crazy as it is, that's where we are today. So, expanding that fiber network to ensure that the customers in our industrial parks and in the port have access to the highest speeds, that's only part of the problem. We can pay, the city probably should be providing the infrastructure so that we can get the fiber down Broning Highway, just as an example, Councilman Craft. But the reality is, once it's in Broning Highway, a provider has to run that last mile into the business. Some of the, some of the areas that we've dealt with require you to get five or six customers together and pay a six-figure check to one of the providers just to get the, the service into the industrial parks. So, you know, we have that issue, and then on the residential side, it's how do you introduce competition? But I did want to be clear. side, it's how do you introduce competition? But I did want to be clear and protective of this, this fine body, that the city council had nothing to do with the fact that Verizon FiOS doesn't exist in Baltimore. The city of Baltimore didn't stand in their way. Verizon made a business decision, and, you know, I beat them up at the time, and I'm still frustrated because I'd love to have it. But the reality is, we didn't stand in their way. The last piece, I think, for me is that, you know, the biggest question is, how do we encourage operators to come into Baltimore that are willing to take a risk, and it is a risk, to deploy a consumer-grade broadband option for residential users? And that really is the challenge that cities are facing around the country and small communities face around the country. It's not just us. We, we've met with a bunch of rural, rural co-ops that are working on this issue. It's very expensive, it has to be programmed over many years, the capital costs. But then you also have somebody, have to have somebody that is capable of installing the modem or the router. And the first time the internet goes down, there's got to be somebody to answer the phone on the other end that can roll a truck out to figure out why that modem stopped working, or why the internet's not working, or why, you know, when somebody dug, where did they break the fiber and who's going to fix it? So those are the big issues that we face. And, and the reality is, there's no right path. We have to figure out what the best path forward is for Baltimore. And unfortunately for us, we have too many communities that still don't have adequate fiber access, so that as we deploy, we're going to have to invest in more fiber. And one of the questions is, is it the city that should be doing that, or should be, we relying on another model, a public-private partnership? You heard Mr. Corella and Mr. Hardbeck talk about that. So.
Thanks. Questions for council, for?
I have a comment.
Mr. Cole. Microphone.
Oh. I just want to say that Councilman Cole was the fearless leader of the fight to bring FiOS to Baltimore. I sat at, that's how I learned the little that I know, I mean, you know a lot more, about that subject, as we sat at table after time after table with different people from Verizon, begging them. And I remember, every time we met at one point or another, you would say, as the convener, you would say, you know, "It's bad enough you don't want to come here, but stop having your sales force tell customers that call that it's city council's fault. We're innocent. We want you. Come, come, come." And that went on for years.
It did, it did.
For years. Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Craft, if I might, I just, if, if you don't mind, I'm going to tidy up the 11th District desk before I leave tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Spivak.
Thank you very much. I speak in strong support of the resolution. Thank Mary Pat Clark for introducing it. Improving broadband in Baltimore is not an option. Solutions to every one of our key problems, economic opportunity, quality of education, public safety, they all depend upon broadband. We know of businesses who have left Baltimore, who have not located in Baltimore because of deficiencies of broadband. We know of schools where the bandwidth within the walls is insufficient, so that eight to 10 students can only take their online test at a time, or the computers freeze. We see police officers standing with pen and paper, taking simple traffic reports, taking them out of service and their availability. And all these are manifestations of a deficient broadband infrastructure. Digital injustice stares us in the face, and I don't think we've responded adequately. Along key highway, connectivity rates exceed 80 percent. Along North Avenue, it's less than 40 percent. And I say this carefully. Unfortunately, there have been lapses of city leadership, manifested by multiple and expensive consultants' reports with little or no implementation. City departments and schools who function as separate silos without coordinated action, and technology officers who come and go, sometimes with scandal. The Baltimore Broadband Coalition, now over 1,100 members, evolved as a crowdfunding campaign in response to insufficient city progress. We wish to achieve the following goals, and we hope they will become the city's goals. Number one, develop fiber optic lines to all homes, businesses, and anchor institutions. Number two, develop an open fiber infrastructure allowing multiple internet providers to compete. Number three, provide low-cost connectivity for all, especially those with low income. Even during this election, there are seven things that the council can do now. Trying to respond to your time. Even though this is an election right now, there are seven things the council can do. Number one, the council should pass and the mayor should sign this resolution. Number two, we all agree a dig-one policy, but that accomplishes nothing with somebody behind it to commit to investment. And we think there must be public investment to lay fiber as part of that dig-one policy, city investment. Broadband should be incorporated in every site review. We must establish a stable revenue source to fund these efforts. That's the critical thing. And we believe that that should start by directing that all conduit fees and the majority of the franchise fees fund conduit and fiber. Together between Comcast and BG&E, we estimate that that's $50 million per year. Number five, we demand that you, that you require changes in the Comcast franchise. I'm not going to repeat what we wrote in the op-ed this morning, but I don't think there's anything in conflict between what we wrote and the legal opinion. Our argument was not that it's a legal equipment, opinion. It's that Comcast must be held accountable for the conditions for their TV franchise. The city must be sure they collect the money, and we must spend the money in the way that's best spent. Nothing to do with legal. Next thing, we should not sell the city conduit.
What?
Number seven, we should use E-rate dollars to expand the fiber to the schools, but, and, we must assure that the bandwidth is delivered to the students within the walls and not just to the school perimeter. We must require the schools to regularly publish what the broadband bandwidth is within school walls. After the election, the new administration and the council must declare what is the city role. We've been waiting for that declaration. You must decide, will the city lead, will the city facilitate, or I hope not, that simply they will wish to get out of the way. They must establish an authority to coordinate all these disorganized public resources for broadband. I'd like to finish by predicting what will happen if the city does not take action. Organizations like the Baltimore Broadband Coalition, not at its first choice, we will move forward and work to raise funds independently and implement improved broadband. The Broadband Coalition will continue to offer a balanced plan, including underserved areas. But others, though, will come forward, and they will cherry pick, and they will target investments where lucrative returns can occur, and they will ignore vast parts of the city. That is already happening. And you will see then isolated efforts and not a coordinated plan. I'd be happy, outside of my two minutes, if you want to respond to the Dosis 3.1 question, and there was one other one, too.
Councilman Henry, do you want to follow up?
Well, I'm, at this point now, I'm not sure whether or not the, what I was going to follow up with before has already been answered, but if you would wish to expand on it.
Yeah. The Dosis 3.1 has been put out by Comcast as a way to expand bandwidth. It's a change in your modem from Dosis 3.0. It has a dependency. That means that it won't provide additional bandwidth unless there's proximity of fiber. I would ask Comcast to tell you, how many, how many communities in Baltimore could have Dosis 3.1 tomorrow and see that performance, who have fiber close enough to make it work?
But I, I mean, frankly, I was already dissuaded by the idea of a $1,000 hookup and $300 a month.
And the second point is.
But the, but the, but the physical difficulties are just icing on that cake.
Yeah. And the second point is, that point that, you know, a, a stronger, a single incumbent provider does not meet any of the, of the problems that are a result of a complete lack of competition.
Actually, if I could, though, in the course of the research that your organization has done, have you been, I guess, I can't think of a better way to describe it, but essentially, have you been backstopping the city in terms of going around and researching what types of successful negotiations other cities have had with Comcast and other broadband providers, when they are doing negotiations with their, with their city?
I don't know about the backstopping, but we've definitely researched Comcast franchise and what are optimal, so to speak, Comcast franchises for the public. I direct you to look at Tacoma as as an example. These Comcast franchises, you know, there's a lot that's said about these franchises, and you should look at every word. They are different to some degree.
There must be something in the air in the Pacific Northwest, because I, I was, I received a copy of a letter to the chief technology officer in Seattle.
Yes.
And it, it confirms Comcast's commitment regarding Comcast provision of complimentary cable and high-speed internet service and modems to accredited schools, nonprofit organizations, libraries, and other community institutions in partnership with the city to support the city's digital equity initiative.
Yep.
And they get, as part of their agreement, 350 complimentary high-speed internet sites.
Yep.
And the city gets to choose those among schools, churches, nonprofits, et cetera.
Franchise.
For high-speed internet.
Yep.
And I, and I say that, saying that I understand that there is a point at which we cannot push, after which perhaps we will be running afoul of federal law, but I would, I would like to think that if we are asking for something equivalent to what someone else has already gotten.
Yes.
Then that shouldn't be considered pushing. I, I don't think that, I don't know.
And can I, can I make one other comment? I just wanted to make sure it's clear on Comcast. The broadband campaign and myself, we're not for or against any company. Our, our belief with Comcast is it should be held accountable for the conditions of the franchise, whatever it is that the city agrees on. And we think Comcast will be an important part of the broadband solution. The point is, that Baltimore has to move to where there's competition, or this whole broadband issue will not be really specifically addressed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Doctor.
I think.
Casey wanted to.
Yeah, he wanted to comment.
Just a very quick comment in response to that exchange with Councilman Henry. So sometimes you will see site agreements related to franchises, which may involve broadband or some other sorts of, call them concessions, what have you. Often, those are the result of a past delinquency by Comcast, which is then remedied by a deal made relating to broadband or what have you. The.
I was just hoping that perhaps what a past delinquency be things like.
A shortfall of franchise fees.
Not, not paying us as much as they're supposed to be paying us each year, or not meeting their previously agreed-upon standards for customer service.
Those are candidates. Yes. It all comes down to leverage.
Okay. Chuck Dobry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm here on behalf of the Communications Workers of America Local 2100, represents the workers that install and maintain the network for Verizon in Baltimore City. I know it says Verizon next to my name on the, as the panel, but I'm not here to speak for Verizon, I'm speaking for the, the workers of the CWA. And our stance is, we would more than, we would be more than willing to be glad that Baltimore would adopt the proposal, of course, for, for example, the jobs. I know it's been a while since One East Pratt Street shut down, and a significant number of jobs left Baltimore City, the Verizon headquarters based on One East Pratt. And I appreciate you, Councilman Clark, clearing up the, all the misconceptions, and Mr. Cole, about all the rumors that our workers hear, that someone's dating someone from Comcast. That's why we can't get the committee. You know, there's the franchise agreement, there's all these rumors that float around, of course. And, and I would appreciate it if you could actually supply us with some type of documentation, so we could share it with the workers that we represent, to let them know that you are not the reason why there's no FiOS in the city.
Quite the opposite, yes. I'm happy to do it, quite the opposite that we're the cause, we're the victims.
Right. Yeah.
And we are, too.
Perhaps we could get something from former Councilman Cole, from, from BDC, rather than come from the council. It would look rather self-serving if we sent it out, but if, if you could do something for.
That would look great.
Yeah, right.
No. No, the president and CEO. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, no problem. Appreciate it. And so, you know, I just did a little basic research, and I know economic standpoint, if I own a business, I'm going to go where the money is. So I did a little breakdown and comparing Baltimore to Philadelphia. And I believe it was in 2012 Verizon began deploying FiOS in Philadelphia. Baltimore, the, the income level, the median household income in Baltimore is 10% higher than Philadelphia. So from an economic standpoint, if I'm going to make 10% of my money, I'm more than gladly going to take it. I know it's, it's an investment, it's a significant investment in money to install the FiOS. However, the maintenance cost of it and the reliability are, I believe, far outweigh the, the cost to install it. So I have a handout here if you'd like to.
Yes.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Dobry? I have a question for you. Are you a Highland Town Dobry?
Excuse me?
I said, are you a Highland Town Dobry?
Ah, yes. Yeah, there's not many of us.
Or a Patterson Park Dobry.
Yes.
Yeah, Jenny Dobry.
Yeah, yeah, they were cousins.
Yeah, yeah. They were Highland Town before it was, before those neighborhoods were divided up into Patterson Park and Canton and all that, right? Good, well, welcome.
All right, thank you.
I was going to wait till after.
I swear. Nope. For those of you who don't know, the Dobry family has long, long roots in East Baltimore, and just have been real stalwarts of the community down there, and really, they all play soccer, right? Deb Tillot. I don't know, Deb, do you play soccer? She's got kids in soccer right now.
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Clark, and distinguished council members, I guess I wish my name was Dobry. I'm Deb Tillot, and the president of ETC, which is the Emerging Technology Centers, the City of Baltimore's Technology and Innovation Center. We're a venture of the Baltimore Development Corporation. Thank you, Mr. Cole. A quick note, currently there are 104 companies in the ETC system. Of those 104, 45% are either MBE or WBE, right? Good stat for the city of Baltimore, and we're technology-related. I consider my number one job is to help create jobs, and that's what I'm here to testify about today. In my role, I work with innovative, technology-enabled companies. And in one calendar year, 2015, those current companies and our graduate companies in the city of Baltimore created 1,335 jobs. Now, it goes without saying that these companies are tech-related, and broadband is additive, but for every one of those tech jobs created, three to four service and support jobs are created. But the people in the neighborhoods that need those jobs can't find out about them without broadband access. And I will give you one anecdotal comment, referring back to something that Mr. Cole was saying. When we moved, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, out of our Canton location to Haven Street, one of our graduate companies went into the building first. And because we weren't there en masse yet, and we were in a new economic development area, this company was quoted $90,000 to run the cable from one side of Haven Street to the other.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay? This is a company of five or 10 people. That's great. But still, $90,000. That said, I just want you to know that I'm here to testify, and I believe that it is an economic imperative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tillot. Councilwoman Clark?
Did you save them? Did you make them?
We did. We worked it out. We figured it out.
Well, that's why I asked Communication Workers of America to be represented here tonight, because I knew they worked on FiOS and Verizon, and that they also represent the kind of jobs that are directly related to technology expansion, and how, I mean, I have, I literally in my district have residents who are moving out of the city, love it as they do, because they both need high-speed digital internet as part of their jobs, and they cannot overcome the problems, and their lives, their livelihoods depend on it. They're moving out of the city, across the borders. I know of companies who are thinking of the same thing. But these are my constituents in one of my neighborhoods, writing me. But these are my constituents in one of my neighborhoods writing me a wonderful email about why they're doing this and why they don't want to leave Baltimore, but they've got to go.
But the only place these jobs are posted that are the service jobs, economic multiplier from the tech jobs, is online. So if you don't have access to online, you can't get that job.
That's right. And we have also in our city, I do, we talked before, whole neighborhoods...
Right.
Where the active people, and a lot of them are retirees, et cetera, are cut off from the kind of communication a lot of other people take for granted, where we, next-door neighbors and all the things, all the information that comes out of the city, for example, about municipal trash cans, is Martian, she's gone, municipal trash cans, or what to do about the snow, and when Eric always writes his reports about progress with getting rid of snow, you know, there are people who aren't going to know that because they don't have access.
And your medical and healthcare these days is very much related to being able to get information electronically. So for me, it's an economic imperative.
Councilwoman Middleton.
And I, Councilwoman Clark, and I agree with you 100%. I locate, Roscom Gardens, which is a public housing. They, the, and it's mostly seniors there, they cannot use their cell phones in the building, which is crazy.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillot. Fred Beschi, Beschi?
Yeah, I'm just going to pass along a few personal thoughts on this bill, but first of all, I need to put my glasses on. Okay, the last paragraph of page one of the bill says that 97% of the survey respondents were dissatisfied with Comcast as the only provider. Yet the last paragraph of page two of the bill talks about renegotiations with Comcast. So I don't understand why the city would want to renegotiate with Comcast, given their terrible performance over the last 10 years, as evidenced by 97% of the survey respondents.
There's nobody else.
Well, that's, that's, that's the problem. It's hard to believe there's nobody on earth that can do this kind of work. So, I mean, that's just, to me, ridiculous. I'm a retired IT director for the State of Maryland Department of Health and Mental Engine. I installed, without knowing much, a fiber optic backbone in the O'Connor Building at Howard and Preston Streets, close to 20 years ago. We didn't know it was super complicated. We didn't know it was super expensive. We just did it, and we did it on shoestring. So it's very hard for me to identify with all these huge numbers. I think that if we just looked at it as a pilot project, you know, we say, you've got this ring already in place, we pick out one part of the city, we figure out what the costs are, we do some serious procurements involving lots of different people submitting proposals, you know, RFPs, et cetera. And we just do it, you know? There's a lot of people that want to talk about things, but they don't do it. I'd like to reference, in 2003, which was 13 years ago, a Comcast update document was sent to customers saying, "The multimillion-dollar Comcast fiber optic upgrade project is now underway." They said this in 2003. Included was a Comcast color-coded map showing that Comcast would complete that upgrade for about half of the city by the end of December 2003, and that the remainder of the project would be completed by 2006. So the fiber optic upgrade promised by Comcast never happened. So much for Comcast promises. I'm sorry, I'm very skeptical about Comcast referring to DOCSIS 3 as being some great solution. You know, I've used DOCSIS 3.0, and 3.1 can't be all that much better. I think the point's already been made that DOCSIS 3.1 already requires some connectivity to fiber optic cabling. So changing topics very briefly, in Consumer Reports, May 2013 issue, Verizon FiOS, which they have in Baltimore County, was rated second among national internet providers, while Comcast was rated 26th out of 34 such providers. And just in terms of cost, I'm currently billed $240 per month by Comcast for TV, phone, and internet services. I have no premium channels like HBO or Showtime, and the phone line frequently drops words in the middle of sentences. It's too expensive and the service is unacceptable. So as I said earlier, it's extremely difficult for me to imagine that there's no company on the planet Earth that's, that's willing and able to compete with Comcast. I just think we have to do it. We have to have a pilot project. We're going to do this little piece of the big puzzle, and that'll make it perfectly clear what the real costs are, as opposed to...
No, I think our, the Smart City Task Force, the Broadband Coordinator, the, what do you call it, Broadband Coalition, I think all of those groups are looking for people or groups to come in and do this. I mean, they were all, you know, everybody's looking for them, nobody's preventing them, you know? So the door is open, the door is open for any proposal. As Councilman Cole said, you know, there's millions of ways to do this, and, you know, we're there, but right at this, at this point in time, at this point in our history, the only person that's ringing the doorbell is Comcast. Sure, go ahead, Dr. Speibach.
He just wants to help you here. He's a backer of our campaign, thank you. Two comments. One is the, the city's not in a straitjacket with this Comcast contract. So transparency itself can advocate for the public. For example, in your existing contract, there's a whole list, I put it in the op-ed, of FCC mandated requirements that the city should be holding. I filed a Public Information Act request. Moat has not yet supplied that after the deadline. I hope that doesn't mean the city hasn't been keeping it. If the city simply reported monthly the Comcast performance, I think that would motivate Comcast. Comcast does not want to be a company that people don't like. It's our survey that showed that 97%. So my suggestion would be to be on the back of Moat, or M-O-C-C, be on the back of M-O-C-C to publish this data on a regular basis. I hope that it does exist. The other thing is, we've had four fiber providers come to us, and they want to move forward. We've held up moving forward for two reasons. One is, we really don't know what the city's role is. We want to work with the city, but we don't know what the city's role is going to be. That makes it very difficult. I have city fiber 300 yards from my house, and I have two private providers 200 yards from my house. But I don't know what the rules will be with the city for us to hook up to it. So that's really limits our sort of organizations. I think, though, my point earlier was that at some point, we would say, well, we give up on the city and we'll move forward and do it ourselves. The other reason that it's difficult to move forward is there's been too little public investment in fiber. And if you're going to shift all the costs to communities like this, then you only end up with the wealthy communities who can afford to do that. And I don't think that's what we want to do.
No, I don't think so. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Beschi. Any other questions? And I know that all of you should be talking with Mr. Hardbeck so that we can be, all be on the same page here with regard to this. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, those are all the folks who checked the want-to-testify box on here, unless there's another sheet in the back there that I don't have, but on the sheets that I have, those are it. So hold on one second, and we'll check here. We'll see if there are any more, and then, okay, come on up. Just tell us who you are.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Kraft, this is Jason Pyron, Councilman Clark. I've been involved in trying to get fiber into the city for quite a while. I worked with the Committee that did the RFP response to the Google Fiber Initiative. It feels like almost a decade ago now. And like someone else said, I've been trying to get a connection between our office and a site across the street for off-site data backup, and it had costs about the same. In New York City, running fiber is fractions of those numbers. We're talking about, you know, fully loaded labor costs of usually around $10 to $15 a foot. That's the fiber and the labor to install. This is very cheap. One of the major impediments that we have in the city are the DOT, the DEW, the General Services, they don't have efficient procedures. And when they do have efficient procedures, they're actually contrary to innovation in this space. They're, to my understanding, and I've looked, there has been no successful usage of directional boring, micro trenching, or any other modern technology for deploying last-mile fiber. What we need is the city council to support innovation. I'm not asking you necessarily to fund it, but allow organizations that are going to do last mile, whether it be nonprofit utilities or for-profit companies, to come in, just like our city is a collection of neighborhoods. We can have a collection of fiber being deployed. When Dr. Lozano was Chair of the Schools, and we talked about this, he was pulling his hair out because there was no way that he can get fiber to his schools in the budgets that they could afford. This is not something that's hard to solve. We just need to have the will for city council to allow innovation, pass laws that allow technology to be innovated and people to spend their money in doing this. That's it.
Councilman Henry?
Yeah, I actually participated in a conversation about micro trenching earlier, I guess, actually, no, I guess this one was last year. And so here's one of the things that we came, we ran into with micro trenching. DOT actually, and, you know, understandably, projects that a certain amount of roads each year will be redone because people are digging up to lay fiber and such. And so, micro trenching coming along, yes, it's innovative, and yes, it's wonderful, and it completely undercuts their expectation that some work is going to be done to the street. And in the, in the light of the decreasing amount of money we've gotten over the last 10 years from the state to maintain the streets, they're not particularly interested in not having that extra revenue coming in that they're expecting for maintaining streets. So what are the things that I tried to negotiate with them was, you know, if, if you're going to do micro trenching, you're going to have a cost savings for the companies that are doing the micro trenching. If you were willing to do some kind of share with the city, to share some of that cost savings with DOT through the, you know, through the format of a, you know, a higher franchise fee for micro trenching or such, then everybody wins. The work can be done at a cheaper rate, and Baltimore City's streets can continue to be maintained at, you know, slightly more than an adequate level. But the, I mean, there's just, that's the reality that's involved. If we get to the point where the state is once again giving us the share of highway revenue funds that we should be getting so that we can completely maintain our streets in good order, and we don't have to rely on the, you know, the private sector's work to get, you know, this block of this street resurfaced, then I think that would be a fine time to have a greater conversation about whether we can afford to let micro trenching come along and be helpful.
So you raised some very interesting points, and unfortunately, I think that they've, they've been giving a little bit of misinformation. One, micro trenching is about this why.
Oh, no, 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 Dr., you don't, you don't have to explain micro trenching.
The next thing...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some people don't know that. I just wanted to point it out, just, not just for you, but for everyone. So there's, there's almost zero restoration cost, and there's no restoration cost in municipality. But the idea that utility work on our streets is what's giving us money to pave our streets? Have you been through most of the streets in my district? They're horrible. I have people that live on a corner where there were three murders, and they tell me the biggest problem are potholes.
I got to tell you, you are not talking to a set of people who need to be told how many people complain about how bad the streets in Baltimore are.
So relying on utility companies and other private companies to come in, to want to do work on the streets, to pave our streets, when what they want to do is a bucket width right here, and then eight feet of restoration either side? So we're looking at 18 feet of restoration per utility work? We have a lot of miles, and 18 feet is not a lot. So if we're relying on private companies to repave our city 18 feet at a time, that's a failure. So we should not be mixing maintenance of roads into getting utilities to our community centers and to our businesses.
It was not my understanding that this is DOT's preference or plan forever, but while we are trying to get by on significantly less money than we used to get, and when I say, like, I'm looking over at Patrick.
2007 to 2011, and that's, they changed the formula after that, our highway user revenue was reduced $100 million, literally, $100 million, and then they changed the formula.
A good way to get some money for the highway revenue is from my property taxes and not have my defense contracting firm move out of the city because we can't have infrastructure.
You don't, it doesn't work that way. The highway user money is not money that comes, it's not our money. It's money that comes to us from the State of Maryland, from people who buy cars, pay gasoline tax, all that.
But relying on the state to fund our roads in our own city is probably where the failure's coming from. We need a better model on that.
Actually, we're not going to debate that here tonight. And they fund the roads in every jurisdiction except the city. We pay for our own roads, but they fund the roads, you know, everywhere else.
But don't let the roads be an impediment to actually getting people that are capable of growing the city and making it more livable.
I feel, I feel comfortable saying that everybody acknowledges the benefits of micro trenching. We just can't afford them right now.
We can afford them because it's a zero-cost item.
All right, well, we're not going to debate this.
There's a lot of people like me who don't know what you're talking about. And maybe that's, I'm sorry that I don't, but it sounds important, and I don't know what you're talking about. And what I'd like to say is, whatever that is, I got it, I kind of get what you're talking about, but not exactly. But what I'm the most concerned about is getting our act together here. And you're, I agree that we might attract a lot of people in for, who want to be part of getting us the kind of internet service digital that we need to keep ourselves growing economically and to serve our neighborhoods so that people can really communicate.
So this affected you, Ms. Clark, in your community, when we tried to put a city watch camera in? The city watch camera cost us about $15,000 plus $80,000 to go 80 feet.
You mean my district?
Yes.
Yeah.
So when Charles Village was putting cameras in, and we ain't got money from Able Foundation, the city said, you know what? To do this, we're going to charge these fees, and you're going to have to do these these ways.
It's franchise fees.
No, it wasn't the franchise issues. It wasn't the conduit fees.
Oh, what was it?
It was the procedures of building permits, road permits, and the prohibition against modern construction methodologies to go 80 feet that ended up costing the village and your residents $80,000 to put a public safety camera in.
Well, let's do this. I think you raised some interesting issues and some valid issues, and I think that maybe you should be talking with Mr. Hardbeck and the Baltimore City Broadband Coordinator, because he's also working with the city agencies, and this is something that we would look at through all the city agencies, and we have transportation over here, and see what type of things that we can do to remove some of these obstacles.
Anything I can do to help.
Okay, thank you very much.
And he'll help.
Is there, oh, no, he'll help. He's not going anywhere. Okay, I mean, so that's everyone that, that's everyone who checked off here. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else here this evening who did not check off one here that they liked, that they wanted to testify, who would like to testify before we finish our business here? Yes, sir, come on up. Please state your name when you get up here.
Hi, good evening. My name's Andy Hinz. I'm just a citizen here.
I'm sorry.
My name is Andy Hinz. I'm just a citizen here in Baltimore. And just based on what I've heard, I know the door is open, but that's not enough. Comcast is not going to be the answer. It can be part of the solution. Verizon is not the answer. It can be part of the solution. We can all be part of the solution. But I think what we don't have is the right attitude and the right urgency. The city needs to provide leadership, look at the models that are out there, and pick one, and start implementing. It's not enough that the door is open. The city has to lead us through the door and bring, bring everybody along that is so desperate to participate, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Can I say amen?
Yes, you did. All right, Councilwoman, do you want to make any closing remarks before we do this?
I would like to join Mr. Andy there and say that I have a sense of urgency about this, because it's a people problem. It affects, I see it affecting our economic abilities to attract businesses and to expand them, to get to that $80,000, I think it was, cost across, I don't remember what's, we're, at the port. That's the kind of thing that scares me a lot. And then I have input from people that actually live or work in my district, literally, nicely, not yelling, telling me, "Sorry, we have to go," around the issue of their ability to access 21st century communication equipment. We got to do this. And I agree with Mr. Hinz, that we need, we need to decide what we're going to do, announce it, and do it. And then that will attract investment, but we're going to go it alone for a while, I think, because, but if we have a plan, if we know, like, if you're running for office and you got no recognition, but you got several months to run, well, then you have a plan. You say, well, first, I'm going to put my name on signs, and then I'm going to go to every meeting that happens, and that, in other words, and by halfway there, maybe 30% of the people will know my name. In other words, it's a plan. If we had a plan that led to the moment when the, the investment really came in in the way we need, we should start that now, so, because that in itself will attract investment. And I'm losing people, and I'm losing potential businesses where I represent, in the district where I am, and expansion possibilities. So I have that sense of urgency. I think it's not a secret that I'm not a master of the technology or the vocabulary, although I read as best I can about what we're doing and what we need to do. I'm no expert, except about people, and about what we need, and how it's important and urgent. So I'm so grateful to you, Mr. Chairman, for spending the time we have tonight, so we can have a very civil conversation with a lot of concerned people who are involved, and that we could say in return to y'all, we'll do what you need, but please act. And even if it's a mistake, we can correct it as we go. It will attract the resources and, that we need to join with us to make this a really good system. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I, just in quick follow-up to the Councilwoman, if you have the opportunity to read the Smarter City Task Force report, if you haven't, it's available online, and in the conclusion on page 20, Task Force recommended that the mayor designate a coordinator, which we have, and that that coordinator is tasked with, one, getting people together, and it talks about a group of that, chairing a committee of stakeholders, developing a citywide report card on basically what's happening there, and then doing exactly what Councilwoman just said, development of a timeline and a plan for implementing the recommendations set forth in this report. And there are short-term, medium-term, long-term recommendations in here, and if those recommendations are followed, we will accomplish what everyone wants us to accomplish here. I do want to close with this final note, too, because as Councilman Cole said, former Councilman Cole, I still, as President Cole says, the people don't understand sometimes the powers that we have and what we don't have. We will continue to advocate and fight for this. We will look for funds. We will encourage partnerships. We will do all of that. But at the end of the day, the city council does not have the power to create a budget for this. That lies in the hands of the mayor, whomever he or she, or she or he may be. That decision has to be made on a policy level, and that decision has to be made to put that money into the budget. We can encourage it. We can work with you to encourage it, but at the end of the day, that is where the decision has to be made. So let's continue to work with one another. Let's work with the broadband team, and let's help move this forward. And I want to thank all of you for being here. We do have a vote, I have a motion by Councilwoman Clark.
I have an amendment. Mr. Chairman, Councilman Branch was absent, which doesn't usually happen, from the session in which this bill was introduced, and I'd like to...
Do we have a second to that amendment? Okay, all those in favor of adding Councilman Branch as a sponsor to this bill signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We have a motion by Councilwoman Clark to adopt...
Serving the council is like being married. You don't have to finish each other's sentences.
Favorable with amendment by, is there a second to Councilman? Second by Councilman Henry. Okay, Councilman Kraft votes yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Kearns absent. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Four votes in the affirmative, no negative, one absent, no abstention. Ladies and gentlemen, this bill will go to second and final reader on Monday, March 7. This concludes the hearing on Council Bill 150263R. Thank you all for attending the hearing. Please check the area around your seat to make certain that you have everything that brought with you. We'll be closing the room shortly. We ask you that you move down to the first floor. Thank you very much.